All right, we are here, ready to start. This is a Casville City Planning Commission meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda, any declarations of conflict of interest? Probably wouldn't be on discussion, right? So we'll move into our item here, discussion on moderate income housing zoning incentives. Who wants to take over that?
So this is a topic where I feel like I don't know much about. I'm taking these off. I've never worked inside the sphere of actually providing moderate income housing zoning, or even affordable housing incentives. Murray had some on the books, but it was never used. Not during my time there and my planning matter. He'd been there probably about 10 years total. He'd never seen it used. And I think because in the end, it just didn't, like, it didn't help anything pencil out. So that said, I'm hoping this can be kind of a good dialogue and discussion tonight, back and forth. Anne has done some research, and so we'll look forward to hearing from her contribute as well. So I have a few slides, and I just thought we'd go through and kind of just provide a topic on each of those slides to get some feedback and thoughts from the commission on that. So there is, what is the name of this? There's a, hmm, it is, the, it's a nonprofit organization called inclusionary housing. And so they have quite a bit of information on incentives. And you can see with this graph, the main categories that exist, and then the ones that are most used. So I thought we'd just kind of take each one of those and have a discussion, and then, based on your experience, the trainings you've been to, and other thoughts you may have, we can discuss other options. I think part of the reason why I struggle with some of this is just because a lot of it might work in a big city, or where you have a lot of density. But how does that transfer or relate to Casville? And I think that's a large part of why I struggle wrapping my head around these types of things. And so that'll be our challenge, right, is trying to come up with a zoning incentive that'll actually hopefully yield some results in Casville, but also work and not, and keep within the, you know, parameters of what Casville is and what we want to remain. So that said, the first one that we were going to talk about was just density bonus. Here's a definition of that, but density bonus is basically you have, like, our RM zone, the underlying density is 16 units to the acre. And so this would be, a developer comes in and says, hey, I want to provide moderate income housing, and in exchange, we say, okay, you can do 20 units per acre, or whatever that number is. So I think all of you have been around Casville and the commission long enough to see how density is generally received, and so that's, again, that's a struggle, right? Because I think kind of the culture of our community is that hasn't really been warmly embraced, especially in some areas of the city. So with that, I just, you know, I mean, we have our most dense single-family zone is R1-6, which is 6,000 square foot lots. So, I'm not very good at math, that's about, what, seven units per acre? And then again, our residential multifamily is 16 units per acre. And so, you know, do we, or do we look at a density bonus as maybe in certain instances, allowing a detached accessory dwelling unit? That's a way to add density as well. So with that, I'll just kind of open it up for some dialogue with the commission. I know Paul will have lots to say.
I'll try not to have too much. A couple of things, you know, I've been doing a lot of reading on this issue lately. I'm on LinkedIn a lot. I don't know if some of you know what LinkedIn is, but I often glean really good ideas from around the country on LinkedIn, from other planners, even outside the country, Ireland, Australia, about how they do zoning. And I'm learning a lot by just listening to other people. But there are a couple of ideas I thought I'd bring up if we haven't touched on those yet. One would be, in our residential zones, instead of having more zones that would allow for greater density, what if we simply had more uses in our residential zones that were by right? In other words, a greater allowance for more creativity within our residential zone. And, I don't know, I was thinking, there's got to be some way to do away with caps, you know, just have less residential zones, but like, within a residential zone, an R-zone, let's say you had two or three zones altogether, residential. And in one of those, you could have single-family zone, but you could have up to four-plex within that zone. And like a lot of cities have done, they have said on any lot that is single-family, in a single-family zone, it's no longer capped at one lot, one home per lot. You can have up to four. This is being done all across the country, and it, cities are simply saying, okay, if you want to choose any number between one and four on your residential lot, you can. And that would simply say, our residential zones can become organically more dense. And, you know, that's kind of a sacred cow, but I think that's also where it's a stumbling block for our country, is that we are married to these zone maps. And people move into a community, and they look at that zone map, and they make decisions based on the rigid idea, or the idea that that line is rigid and can never move. And so, it's a security blanket, but that security blanket is really creating a lot of havoc. Those rigid zoning lines, or those zones that have very little flexibility in them, are creating this mass housing shortage. And I think it's also created this monster that we call nimbyism. Because there's an expectation in that inflexibility of the zoning boundaries, people come to expect that there can't be any change, I'm not going to have any change, and if there's anything at all proposed, they go nuts. And then we have officials who, in my opinion, shouldn't be kicking it down the road, but I think we have a lot of decisions that are based on, well, while I'm in office, I'm not going to, that can be for somebody else. I've had them say that to me in private, I've heard it in public, and I think there are solutions, it's just, are we willing to make them? So one would be, allow more uses in the residential zones, and perhaps reduce the number of residential zones. And that creates an expectation right off the top. Hey, in our residential zone, not residential zones, you can have up to a four-plex in your neighborhood. It's not a single-family neighborhood anymore, it's a residential neighborhood. So we change the terminology, and we start to create a dialogue around, well, why are we doing that? Because if you, well, for example, my very first home, I bought in the unincorporated part of Midvale in 1989. And it was a mixed-density neighborhood, it was exactly like what I'm talking about. We had four-plexes, duplexes, and single-family homes, all in that zone. It was the neighborhood between Fort Union Boulevard and I-215, and Ninth East and Seventh East. Everybody can probably picture that. You know where RC Willie is in Murray? Or, I don't know if it's still there. Okay, there is RC Willie that used to be in Murray there, on Winchester 6400, and just north of that was this darling neighborhood. And it had a mixture of densities, but I remember every time somebody wanted to build something other than a single-family zone, people would get like, ooh, what am I going to do? Now, nobody ended up moving, and that neighborhood now has a real nice mixture of twins duplexes, or twins four-plexes, twin homes. So there's condos, there's a nice mixture, but it's still predominantly single-family. So when you come in to look for a home, like I did, I saw the neighborhood and I went, okay. And it worked great, I was there for seven years, it worked great. And I had a small lot, 6,500 square feet. You couldn't tell that it wasn't an 8,000 square foot lot by driving by it. But it's that, you put numbers behind that R, and man, that, you lock yourself into permanent conflict, I think. So that's one idea. Sorry it took so long to explain that, but I hope that makes sense. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, I had this idea that what if we simply amend our zones? You know, when our zones aren't working, how about amending the zone? You know, rezones scare everybody. Rezones bring people out. But when you put a public hearing notice up to amend a zone, it just doesn't bring the heat. And I think it's easy to explain what you're doing in the zone. Now, you may end up generating heat on the back end of that, but, for example, in our R1, do we have an R1-10 zone? Okay. Most cities are R1-8, R1-10, R1-15, R1, you know, every city's kind of the same, setbacks are all the same. But what if we created new zones that just allowed more density? For example, our cap is RM, right? I mean, our highest-density zone is RM, right?
Well, mixed-use doesn't have a prescribed density, but yes, RM is the highest density.
Sorry, I missed it. I meant to say, our RM is our highest residential zone for density, correct?
Correct, yes.
And it is 15, is it not?
16.
16, okay.
15.6.
Okay. It's so interesting, because as a planner, I worked for several cities, and everybody, it feels like everybody copied the same RM zone. The same purpose statement, the same summary, you know what I mean? They all read the same. And it's cities that are understaffed, is what they do, is the planners just go, well, what did they do? Well, let's go find out what, you know, Murray did, or Midvale. And so they cut and paste, just to keep their head above water. You guys wouldn't know anything about that. I know staff, you have so much time for everything. So what you do is, everybody cuts and pastes a zone. Well, what if we just take the caps on some of those zones and go, really? In a very populated metro area like we have, our highest density we allow in an acre of land is 16? It's just really artificially low. And there are several ways to reduce density. One is setback, okay? You have big setbacks, that reduces density. If you have height caps that are artificially low, that reduces density. All you have to do is say the setbacks are big and the height is low, and there's only so many units you can mathematically fit in there. So one is to go to your residential zone, like our RM, and go, 16 is just not, it's not that high. It just isn't that high. And ironically enough, if you look at cities 40 years ago, they had higher density caps 40 years ago than we do now. I worked in Centerville for 10 years as their planning director. We had this gorgeous condo project called Pheasant Brook, it's just off of Main Street. It's really nice, private roads, the units are darling, it almost feels a little British. It has this nice brick feel, bricks, brick and chimneys. It's gorgeous. And its density cap was over 30. 20 years later, I come to the city, and now our cap is 16. So instead of allowing for density that we had years before, we've cut it in half. And it's like we see land as an infinite resource. It's not. Land and water are finite, yet we can create people infinitely. There's no cap on how many people we can make, but we can't just buy a bucket of land and pour it out on the ground and fit more people on it. So we mainly just look at the RM zone and go, 16 an acre is, it's just not right. If we have any RM land in the city that isn't occupied right now, or any future rezone, we could simply say, the RM zone, we're going to increase that. That's one way of getting more density, pretty easily. You amend the zone. So amending the zone, creating zones that allow more uses within them. And then another one is, I don't know if some of you have been reading the paper lately about housing, but Farmington, our neighbor, right over here, they allow for their ADUs. You all know what an ADU is, right? Accessory dwelling unit? So like, Las Vegas, they call them casitas. So you've got this, like, a big garage out back, and it has a studio apartment in it. Bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, living room area. Well, Farmington is now allowing those to be split off from the main property. So what you're doing, in essence, is you're creating very small lot, single-family development within that zone. That's kind of going back to this first one, allow more uses. So if you choose on your R1-10 lot to build a, you know, a large home, great. But what if you decide to build a smaller home, but build an ADU in the back, and you can sell that off, and somebody can live in it? It's their land. These are really creative ideas, because a lot of cities have been very, very reluctant to allow for ADUs to begin with. But then when they do allow them, and I know, because I worked for One Holiday, we were one of the first ones to say, we were okay with ADUs. But then we threw so many darn rules on them that, guess what? Nobody wanted to build one. Really, we have all these gorgeous properties in Holiday, on these little narrow properties, these narrow, narrow streets, eight, 10 feet wide, and they go back to 4 million, $10 million houses. And they're on two, three-acre parcels. And they could put an ADU out there, in fact, all of them already have ADUs on those big, fancy properties. They've got guest houses that they've had forever. But they're not allowed for them to be occupied more than a certain number of days per year, and there's no way you could sell them off. In other words, create a subdivision on your property. That's another creative way of allowing for density, and the beauty of allowing for an ADU to be split off from the main property, is that they can build equity, because they get ownership, right? So that means, small as it may be, if you would allow a 500 or 6, 800 square foot ADU out there, that's perfect for some young couples, young families, or older people who've downsized, and they just want a safe place, maybe in their own backyard. My wife and I have actually talked about this. What if we were to sell the main house to my kids, one of my kids, and we build a nice ADU out back? I'm on a half acre. What a cool idea. As I get older, I'll be 40, 30 steps from the back door of my house, my kids can come out and take care of me, I have my own access to the street, because I have my own garage. And it's a great way to have density, that, you know, when I die someday, my kids can sell that off to somebody. Or they can rent it. Look at the possibilities. You can rent and/or sell it, and you can do it on your own timeline. There are really creative things we can do, I just think the real problem is between our ears. You know, that's really where we're messed up. So those are three ideas I wanted to throw out quickly, just to kind of see if anybody thought that might be a good idea, or what's wrong with them, there are others.
Chair.
I see, I think those are some really interesting ideas, and like, worth exploring, but to me, it's, I wonder why we haven't even taken the first step of allowing detached ADUs. That seems like the very low-hanging fruit that should be a priority.
So, Paul, interesting, but when I was in Murray, Boyer purchased the RC Willie building and brought a mixed-use project.
The which, the which building?
The RC Willie building, on Winchester, yeah. And the neighborhood next door did not like the idea, it stalled out, then ended up having a TLUR, so that we could revise our mixed-use zones. But yeah, that's definitely, right, that's, I think, the biggest challenge with a lot of this. And, you know, so, how does it work in Casville? And I think those are, you know, great ideas. I'd love to hear more commissioners about what they think of some of Paul's thoughts, but I also think that detached ADUs are definitely something that would allow a lot of opportunities for people, whether it's aging parents, you know, kids in college, young married couple. In fact, I failed to mention this in my department head, or my department update last week with the city council, but both Mindy and Anne have been keeping a hash mark of all of the calls that come in, people asking about the detached ADUs. And since May, I think we've had 30. And my building staff haven't been keeping track of that, but they get a lot of calls about it as well. So I think that's a valid idea. I know that Farmington actually presented their idea on the detached ADUs at the league conference on the Planner's Day, so I don't know if anyone else was able to attend that. But I know we had at least one council member that attended. Did you go too? So I think we had a couple of council members that attended that presentation. So that may be something that the council would be open to, and they just haven't in the past.
Yeah, and with that many people asking about it, I mean, it shows that there's acceptance out there. It's hard to tell what percentage, you know, would fly for that, but it does show that there's interest in people that aren't opposed to it, so.
Yeah, and most everyone who comes in is speaking about a family member, an aging parent they want to have close by, and even, you know, like, my mom, I was in West Bonneville, she was in Orem, that was way too far. We had somebody that came in a few weeks ago, and, a couple months back, you know, and they're like, my parents are on the other side of Casville, or they're in Farmington, and that's too far. So, you know, having somebody on the same property could be a way to really allow still some autonomy, but have the, you know, peace of mind that you're there when your, their needs, you know, when they're needed, or if they have needs. Who mowed my mom's lawn, you know? I mean, those types of things, it's, so it could be something that really could alleviate a lot of those concerns.
I just have a question about what the requirements usually are for an ADU, as far as access, utility, hookup. If that's something that's being allowed to be then sort of replanted as its own lot, I would assume you would have to have it have its own meter and its own utility hookups in order to do that.
Farmington's code requires that. Obviously, if you're going to subdivide, which they're allowing, then you would have to have that. I know some of the concerns that the council has had when they've discussed this is, you know, do we have enough utilities capacity to serve additional residents? And so, you know, that's certainly something that is valid, we don't want to overextend our existing water capacity, or sewer, obviously, power. So, you know, I think the answer to that would be however we would want to craft it. I think what, Farmington, and I have read the code, in fact, it was linked out of Wilf's blog four or five weeks back, if you subscribe to his blog.
She gets paid on the subscriptions.
It's one of the few email letters that comes through that I actually read, take the time to read. But actually, I had a lot of questions after reading Farmington's ordinance as to how they're really going to implement and track all of that. I kind of left with more questions than answers, so it'll be interesting to see how they work through that. They had a three-year provision in the ordinance that it'll sunset after three years, but obviously, if things are working well, they can continue, you know, they can extend the ordinance. My guess is, that would probably be something that would happen, but they'll probably have to make amendments to the ordinance. It's hard that first time around to get your ordinance right. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
Well, I think in, because east Casville, just here, we have duplexes, four-plexes, a very diverse, not just single-family, but some of those single-family are still on large lots, almost, and some of them, almost an acre. Whereas others have, the lots have been divided, flag lots and what have you. So the density is increasing. I don't have really a problem with that kind of development, where it is more organic, like Paul was talking about, that it sort of comes about as the need arises, or the property changes ownership, and they're wanting to expand out, or something like that. Not so sure, I guess I'd have to look at what the amended zones might play out to be. I don't know that anything increased height in some areas is not going to go over well. If you have a 60, 80-foot tall building next to a single-family home, where you have people looking directly down into your backyard, that's going to definitely be a not-in-my-backyard kind of thing. But I think having that sort of, you know, layer up into more dense, it just depends on how all that is written and put together.
Earlier this week, I had meetings with two different groups that are looking to develop property in Casville. And the conversation, first of all, it really centered around, like, in Utah, Wasatch Front, Casville, with land prices and building prices. I don't, honestly, I don't know how you get to an affordable product unless you have attached walls. I just, I just don't see that happening. So that was part of the discussion. In fact, and then what came up was that R2 development right next to Smith's. And, I'm going to use this as a verb, I zillowed that. And they were priced between 500 and 700. So low fives into the low sevens. And they have zero yard, you know, so, and obviously, the people who choose to live there, that works for them. But that said, without attached walls and openness to that, I don't know how we hit that moderate income housing mark. The other comment that came out of that was that our height limitations at 30 feet for a townhome really doesn't allow you to have three stories. So we're limiting that to two-story townhomes as well. And so, you know, that's another thing. So, I mean, I think even if you went to 35 feet on a townhome, you could get three stories.
On the issue of height, and again, as somebody who issued a lot of permits in 30 years, and dealt with this a lot, I think this is one of the most terrifying aspects of land use in Utah, is that we have a phobia about building height. I mean, we are artificially short. You know, 30 feet? I have a Rambler, mine's a ranch house, and I have an 812 pitch, and I'm well over 20 feet. 30 feet is just a little bit higher than when I'm standing up on my roof. I have worked with architects, with contractors, and in Holiday, when we were doing our zoning changes 20 years ago, we came up with some really cool ideas on how to make properties work in terms of architecture. We had flexible setbacks, averaging of setbacks, averaging of building height, which takes into account slope. We had these very interesting rules that we vetted with the construction community and with the, with property owners, and with others to say, and with architects, and we said, how, what would work for you? And the more creative you get, the more creative, the better it is. This 30-foot height allowance, I mean, I just, I just, it kills me when we artificially limit density by having a height restriction that's so low. I mean, in the Holiday Village, which I personally have given 32 tours, even after I retired, I've gone down and given tours of the Holiday Village. And our city council, I love those guys, they're great, but they hurt the village when they dropped the height allowance on the building without really understanding what the difference between 35 and 38 is. It's huge. When you are building a home, when you're building a structure for people to live in, when you artificially limit the height, even two feet or three feet, you do a ton of bad stuff. You take away architectural flair, you have these lower ceilings, it makes them less attractive to live in based on the trends. I mean, these are negative things, when you have eight-foot ceilings instead of nine. Why? Well, because my roof can't be a one foot higher. Oh, you're kidding me. Where the rubber meets the road, when you're a staff person and you deal with these things day-to-day, you start to understand that at 38 feet, you can comfortably get three stories in with two-foot separation between the floors and the high ceilings. At 35, you barely make it. Anything over 35, you can get three stories in. 38's perfect. And yet, when you're out there on the street, or you're living behind it, or a house or two away, that foot or two doesn't kill your view. Besides, they don't own the view. Are we going to kill density because of an arbitrary height limit on the building? I don't understand why 35 feet isn't okay, why 38 feet isn't okay. We need to allow more flexibility, and that's one of the best ways to kill flexibility and density, is to say, well, for three stories, you're capped at this. I mean, the philosophical debates we had in Holiday over it were incredible. So you know what we did? Our council actually said, well, we don't, we don't want... Our council actually said, "Well, we don't, we don't want, we don't want anything more than two stories." And we're like, "Well..." Well, you know, actually, what they did, they said, "We don't want any more than X number of feet in height." And we said, "Okay." And when people started to do three stories in it, they're like, "Oh, that's not what we meant. We don't want three stories because that gives us more units." And we said, "Well, you set the height limit, not the, not, not the, not the units." And they're like, "Oh," and I said, "You know, that height thing is so insidious." Or, for example, where you measure height. I know as planning commissioners, you guys are probably rolling your eyes, but I'm telling you, when you have an inspector and a planner and a contractor, and the rule is based on how you measure the roof line, it can make all the difference in how a building looks, how it turns out, and how many people can live in it. If you just give a little bit of flexibility, it's amazing, the results that are better by just allowing flexibility and creativity, like the averaging of roof lines and stuff.
Yeah, ours is measured off of the average height of the highest peak.
Okay.
So, it's not to the top of the peak, it's to the middle of that highest peak. So, that does give a little bit more flexibility.
That's good. In Holiday, we had 10 equal measurements. You took the width of the structure, you measured it 10 different equally spaced points, and it was from, from the existing grade, the grade that was there before you manipulated the land. You see, because people will play games with rules if you're not careful. They would go in and bring a bunch of fill material and then want to measure from the two feet of fill they brought in to the top of the roof line.
I would, I would need a PhD in math to understand that in my zoning approvals.
Yeah, I'm telling you, it was interesting. Sometimes approvals to get it just right would, could take some hours. Now, that was hard on staff, but it reduced the conflict in the field, and it also reduced the cheating, because in Holiday, everybody wants to look at Mount Olympus, and so, that's everything. They literally will buy the zip code just so they can have a view of Mount Olympus. So, the, I could tell you stories that you would not believe about the effort to get the height on a home right, and really taking roofs off. We've had people take roofs off by being 18 inches over a foot. So, anyway, that's another way, is just allow a little more height in your residential zones. It doesn't, it's not measurable hurt. It's mostly up here in your head. Yet, it can make all the difference in the living space and how many people can live in a building. So, more flexibility with roof height.
Let's see, we haven't heard from Commissioner Seedy, Commissioner Packer, I don't know if you added anything, or I think you did actually, but anyone else want to speak to density bonus? And we can move on to some of the other topics.
I, just when you were talking about it, I'll mention, you know, we have that question, "How do you do it in Kaysville?" I do think it'd be easier in a bigger city when you're trying to get the developers to bring density to the table. With us, I, it'd be difficult, I think, because we just, we have so few opportunities, and then how would we handle it if we said yes to one project because of fit, and then the next week, another project, like, "Yeah, but we don't like it there, and so, we're going to say no," and they're like, "Well, why'd you dangle that carrot out there for me?" We'd have to be able to, you know, walk the, walk the walk, you know, whatever we were talking. And I don't know if, I don't know if there's a version of a density bonus that quite fits us, at least not that I can imagine right now. Or at least, those are questions I have, you know, like, "How would we craft it?"
So, just a couple other interesting thoughts, but one of the groups we met with earlier this week was Symphony Homes, and they said that right now, their average home, average home is selling for 1.8 million. And, you know, they, so we rezoned last year the Webster property to R114. A lot of those lots they're bringing in the subdivision, they're much larger than the 14,000 square feet, and they're saying that's what our client tells wants. And so, I think also, Commissioner Packer, to your point, that's kind of what Kaysville has become known for and kind of that expectation. And so, is there a mind shift that can happen to be open to more of that? But that's pretty stunning numbers, you know, and Symphony is known for a certain type of product as well. But, you know, that's, I think that's a big challenge. There is a stigma involved with density and height, for whatever reasons. Well, let's move on. The next topic, we've covered some of this.
Melinda?
Yeah.
Can I borrow your mic? I can't get my mic to turn on, but I'll just throw in my two cents, which is also kind of redundant, but just to, you know, throw in my own support. I have been feeling like for a while detached ADUs, to me, are a no-brainer for our city. And I feel like in a city that kind of is fearful of density, it's the easiest, simplest way to have non-confrontational density. It's, you barely see it, you may not even know it's there. It's, it's just, you know, moving in kind of at this organic slow pace. It's bringing in your family members, you know, and opportunities that I think would really be welcomed. And for the most part, I think, would be, you know, just, you know, acceptable when it causes, wasn't causing issues. I think that would be where we, where I would see us starting, for sure. And I also agree that I think a little bit of flexibility on the height would just provide a nicer architectural project or product, you know, I think. We've talked about it before at the commission, I think some of those units that are on Main Street are above technically our height cap, that I think are quite lovely and really, you know, so I just think, I think that would be something I would be open to. Maybe it doesn't always make sense depending on what it's a budding, but, you know, in general, I think that's, that's something for sure to look at.
Yeah, I, as the discussion has taken place, I agree, I think that those detached ADUs are something that is low-hanging fruit. It won't, on the face, really change the look or the feel of the neighborhood. They're tucked in the backyard, you know, and, and there's a lot of concern about, you know, bringing, let's just say, strangers into your neighborhood or your home or your own property, right? But most of those would tend to be utilized by your family, by my, my, my brother lives in an area where they can't have detached ADUs either, and my sister-in-law's mom is no longer able to be on her home on her own. They're going to have to sell their house so that they can have a place for her to be. They're going to have to sell their house and move. And, you know, that's what some of the folks that have come in and have talked about have said that, you know, "If we can't do this, that's, that's the only option that we're left with." Although, there's not a lot of cities locally that do allow those. I know Bountiful does and Farmington. So, that's, yeah, it's a real challenge, but that's something, right? I mean, you often hear in the public hearings, like, you get more turnover with townhomes and RM and, and more crime and all of those things that people say, whether they're true or not. But the detached ADUs, generally speaking, you're going to be a little bit more discretionary of who you're bringing into your own property and sharing that with. And so, I think that's a fairly harmless approach to providing opportunities for people that, that need those and who want to provide those for their own relatives as well. That's good. It's up. I think we're good. Thank you. So, the next topic was just kind of having variations on what your typical rules are. We've covered that a little bit, but height. You know, going back to the townhome, if you have a three-story townhome, you may have a couple with a small family that might be able to stay there for a couple of years longer versus outgrowing it within three years. You know, so that's something that could make a huge difference. And some of the concerns that the public has about those people in townhomes or those higher density, they're not invested, they don't stay, it turns over, right? But you provide a little bit more density and, and internal density, not necessarily unit density. But now, you have four bedrooms instead of three, or you have three bedrooms instead of two, and that can provide for a little bit more consistency within the public as well. So, some of the other zoning variants, or zoning incentives that they have, right? It's varying the setbacks, reducing parking requirements. Some of the reasons why I think I struggle with, with this as well is because our zoning code is so basic. You know, we require for our single-family, two per unit. And our RM code, or our multifamily, has different requirements. But, you know, a lot of the discussion at the state level on housing affordability, you know, talks about like, "Don't require garages, don't require parking spots." We don't already require a garage. Two, two spots, you know, I think that's probably a pretty good number for a single-family. Do we reduce it to one? You know, perhaps that's an option. However, again, back to Kaysville, we don't have a lot of transit. We don't have any, you know, we don't have any frontrunner stations, we don't have tracks, we barely have bus service. And so, reducing those parking requirements, I mean, there are some families or couples or, that share a vehicle, but I think more often than not, in the West, in Utah, where we are, just where we are, we kind of have to have two vehicles per household. So, you know, how does that impact? There's been discussion about allowing tandem as, you know, being, some cities restrict in having the tandem where you park one in front of the other, that that doesn't count as two parking spots. We don't have that regulation. And so, you know, the zoning variances on that, on parking, it's kind of like, "Well, how do we do that?" Because we really don't have a lot of regulations in the first place. But setbacks are something that really could make a big difference as well. And going back to kind of like wanting to have the same kind of aesthetic feel from the streets view. If you were to have, regardless of the size of the lot, the same setback. You know, R16 has 25, R120 is 30 feet, I think. But if we had 25 all across, you know, that may help people feel better because it all looks the same. So, you know, setbacks are an area where I think we could make some changes, but I think we covered height pretty well. But any other thoughts on setbacks or parking?
With parking, the issue is really not with single-family, but with the multiple family product. About four or five years ago, I spoke on a panel with Donald Shoup. Donald Shoup is the parking guru in our country. He's a UCLA professor. He was down in West Jordan at the Veridian Center, and it was me, a developer, and him. And he is the guy that's written books, and he, it's amazing what his, what his study has done, is he shows that there's a huge cost in requiring too much parking. And so, what's going on in our country right now is that there's city after city that's doing away with their parking regulations, sometimes all together. You can allow a 30-story building, and they don't tell you how many parking stalls to have. My own experience as a planner was that cities are much more, much less informed than developers are about what they need. If the developer's going to go out and build their project, to sell that project, they know what they need. One time, we tried to tell Lone Star Steakhouse, which is on the frontage road in Centerville, it was there years ago, and we said-
It was supposed to be saloon in Steakhouse.
What?
Do you remember? It was supposed to be saloon in Steakhouse.
Well, I was in the middle of that, yes, yeah. Yeah, that was, we actually had to go, we had a council member go to the mat. And we, he actually called up the corporate office and asked them if they would take that off.
The word "saloon."
Yeah, and they said, "Well, it's our trademark." And he said, "Well, we really don't want you to come in unless you're going to do that." Now, they did it, but it was over, you know, I mean, they, they really wanted to be there. But that was a strange one, but you know, he couldn't, they couldn't require it. He wanted to pass some ordinance, and we said, "Well, you can't pass an ordinance after the fact, and you can't pass an ordinance that restricts trademark." You know, you can't. So, anyway, that was a very interesting, I think, I'm glad you brought it up. Yeah. And then we had a Land Rover dealership that went in next door. But the Lone Star, when they came in, they were kind of new to Utah. I think there was only one other one that had been built, and that was in Midvale. Anyway, we told them, "Hey, here's what our ordinance requires." And they just chuckled and said, "So, this is on the other extreme." They said, "Well, we need double what you're, what you're, what you say is a minimum." So, the problem is that cities often make a mistake when they have a cap instead of a minimum, or a minimum instead of a cap. God, I need to, I need to get my planner hat back on. But anyway, we said, "You need to have 80 stalls over there," and they said, "No, you don't understand. We can't fill half of our restaurant at 80 stalls." And they said, "We need 160," and they said, "Do you have a prohibition against us having the parking that we know we need?" And we said, "No." We just say you have to have a min, this is the minimum you have to have. And they said, "Well, we need a lot more than that." And then, so, the opposite of that is when you tell somebody who's building a condo or an apartment project or a mixed-use project, how many stalls you have to have. It can completely take out the profit margin for the develop, it can make the pro, it can make it so the project doesn't pencil. They literally won't build it. They'll say, "Well, I can't build it. If I have to have two stalls per two-bedroom unit, if you, if you required me to have too much parking, I can't, I can't build this project." And they're not lying. And so, in Salt Lake, a lot of the multiple-family product down in Salt Lake is actually parked at about one-half to .75 stalls per dwelling. Now, they're closer to transit, but there are projects in downtown Salt Lake that are parked at less than one stall per door. And that's pretty normal across the country. So, in our village in Holiday, we actually got on board with thinking out of the box. And instead of telling them that they had to have a certain number, we said, "Well, you can't have more than this, because if you require too many stalls, you raise the rents, because they don't have enough square footage." So, if you have all this ground parking outside, number one, you kill the idea of mixed use. So, if you want to create a little district with darling buildings like the Holiday Villages, which is really great, if you require too much parking between the buildings, it pushes the buildings apart, and so, what you have is a strip center and not a mixed-use downtown. In mixed-use downtowns, and all these places that we go on vacation, visit, the buildings are really close together and the blocks are short, and the streets are narrow. That's what you want in these downtown areas. Well, if you require a bunch of surface parking, you kill all of that, and you reduce the amount of square footage in the building the property owner has to rent, therefore making it harder for them to build a project or to keep it alive. So, over-parking is a serious addiction that we have in our country. So, in terms of parking, we need to be thinking in terms of the property owner knows best, and us telling them the minimum they have to have is often a gigantic mistake. And it's been proven that economically, it's disastrous for cities to mandate these minimums. They're just, in fact, Dayton Hudson, which is the parent company to Target, you're all familiar with Target. There's a Target in Centerville that we built. Going on 30 years ago, it was one of the first Targets, and so, I was there when that came in. And Dayton Hudson, which is the parent company, we, they said, "We need to have 6.6 stalls per thousand square feet of retail." And we said, "Okay," because our minimum in our code was 5.5. But somebody at Target figured out how expensive it is to put that many parking stalls. Have you ever been to a Target, even on Black Friday, that had the entire parking lot full? It's almost a physical impossibility. These, and so, if even on the busiest day of the year, which these parking lots are built for, aren't full, think about the other 364 days of the year, and what the percentage is of that huge asphalt parking lot occupancy is. It's in the teens, 17%, 18%, but we build this giant parking lot, which is super expensive to lay that asphalt down and to stripe it and to salt it and scrape it and light it. But then, when it starts to deteriorate, you got to fix it. And so, it's insanity that cities say, "You must have X number of stalls," instead of allowing a much smaller amount and giving the consumer a choice on when to go to that use because there are less stalls. If I want to go to a popular restaurant, what's the best way to find out a popular restaurant? Where all the cars, man. A place that always has cars in front of it, that's where you know to eat. of it, that's where you know to eat. And so, by having less parking psychologically, when you go by a use and there's always cars in front of it, you think quality. You think, oh, that's where I want to be. And that's exactly how it works. So, there's a psychology to having less parking. There's nothing less attractive than a big strip center where there's eight cars in front of four different buildings. That place looks like it's dead. So, parking, I can't emphasize enough from my professional experience, to ask this planning commission to really think about looking at parking and making changes wherever we can to reduce parking. It just changes economically and environmentally. The chemicals that leach from those parking lots, think about the salt and the, and the solids that get into our storm drains. It's a big environmental issue, too. And urban heat island, those four, five-acre parking lots, they generate massive amounts of heat. So-
I did see that parking lot full one time. And then when there was a huge, huge windstorm through Centerville, and it was chock full of semis because they couldn't drive-
Yes.
...from Centerville. So, the east wind, but they had semis flying-
Yep.
So, a catastrophic event is what you're saying.
Yep.
Maybe one time.
We had, we had a wind so bad in Centerville when I was there, that a chain-link fence actually bent. Chain-link.
Because of the wind.
Yeah. August at about 1:20.
It was quite a tremor, wasn't it?
Yeah. Well, and the train actually got derailed. So, that's, that's a strong wind. So, anyway, think about that parking thing. The science is so clear on it. And it's logical once you understand it, you go, oh, yeah.
You know, I've said this before, but parking and traffic are really hard because everybody has an opinion on it. But very few people have an expertise in it. So, you know, the notion of, yeah, across the country, a lot of cities have done away with parking requirements, and they're just letting the development come in with what they know their development needs. You know, in Utah, that's, that's hard for, at least off-street parking, right? That's hard for us because we have four or five months out of the year where we're plowing, and there's snow on the street, and we need cars off of the street so that people can get to where they need to go. So, that's a challenge that a lot of other places don't have to deal with. But there is just a big mental aversion that people have to, to having vehicles parked on the street. And I, you know, it's, how do I know? I might be married to one. It bothers him infinitely more than it would ever bother me.
I too am married.
Okay. So, but you know, it's, and there's, there's certain instances in where it's kind of which came first, that you can or the egg. And so, you have these, these multifamily developments, and people can't afford to live there. And so, they get, you know, you have a three-bedroom, and, but you have six people living there, and each of them have a car. And so, now you're underparked because you have six cars to one unit. But they're doing that because they can't afford to, you know, the rent on their own. And so, how do you, you know, how do you fix that? And then you also have instances where developers want to save every dime that they can and don't care if they underpark. And I've had that situation as well. And so, you know, it's hard. But I have had developers come and say, look, your code says this, but we've done our own parket study, or market study, and the market says we need this many per unit. And, and in one instance, that was actually more than what we required. But good developers, they want to park adequately. Those developments that are underparked, right, you don't want to go there. You can't find a parking spot. It's inconvenient. And then later on, you know, if they want to sell the development, nobody wants to buy it because it's just a problem. Nobody wants to live there. So, they lose tenants. So, parking, you know, parking, there are a lot of struggles. But, and like I said, it's hard because everybody has an opinion on it. And the people who make a decision, you know, often have those strong opinions, and yet they don't have the, the expertise of, you know, being a parking expert. So-
Just a footnote, a real quick footnote. Do we have in our current ordinance, an allowance or a requirement for what's called a shared parking study?
So, in our mixed-use zone, we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's a, it's a fantastic tool to use, to justify underparking. In most people's vernacular, they would say, well, that's underparked. But actually, a good shared parking study, what it does is it takes the uses that are proposed to share a parking lot. So, instead of each one having the minimum parking and creating a lot that's artificially large and expensive and for all those reasons, bad, if you do a shared parking study, it studies the diurnal range, the daily range of traffic as it comes in and out to those uses. So, we did one in Holiday years ago. This guy didn't want competition. He didn't want a hotel to go in next door to his hotel. And so, he said, hey, your people are going to be parking in my parking lot because you're not making him provide as many parking stalls. Well, that developer, this really smart developer, he hired the, the, the expert on parking in the state of Utah, fantastic guy. And he looked carefully at the uses that were proposed on both properties. And he showed, clearly showed, at the city council, because there was a big fight, and there was a big appeal. And he went and he showed, he said, this is perfect. This parking lot is, is not too big, not too small. It's scoldy locks. It's just right. Because the hotel, for example, hotels, they have parking, you know, there's nobody at a hotel from 10:00 AM till 5:00 or 6:00. Nobody there. They come, they sleep, they leave. They come, they go shop and do whatever, and they come back. So, during the day, a hotel, this one had a hotel component and a couple of restaurants. And he said, well, there's nobody there during the day. So, the office used next door that the guy owns who doesn't want people parking his parking lot, he couldn't make the case in front of the council that the parking lot needed to be bigger because the traffic consultant said, but nobody's going to want to park in your parking lot when this hotel has nobody in it during the day. And when your office is shut down at night and there's nobody there, the hotel is full. So, just by having the requirement or the allowance for a study to show for a reduction in parking is a brilliant tool.
I think we used that to some extent with that mixed-use with the hotel. I think there's a lot of shared parking consideration there.
Yes.
Yeah. It'd be, it'd be really interesting if someone who had a lot of time and a drone could give us some information on where we have a lot of unused asphalt. I think it'd be, I'd be curious about it.
Yeah. Well, our grocery stores certainly do.
Yeah.
I, I go to the New Smith's all the time. And when I shop on the east side, those parking lots are never full. They're never full, full. 70% is even a rarity. There are some cities, what they've done is they've put cameras, a 24/7/365, and they've studied their parking for the entire year. And they break it down by the number of cars that are parked, so they have it high enough. And it's amazing what they find out. Your assumptions about parking are mostly wrong in our heads. We are, when you, when you actually see photos and they break it down, you go, wow.
There's a lot of-
The average on the year was 18%. That's 82% of the parking lot that's almost never used.
Any other thoughts on this particular topic? Anne, anyone?
I have thoughts, but I don't want to completely derail the conversation either. I was just, it was more of a question, just as a non-Utah native. Does, I know Utah state law has a very, you know, clear outline for what is required for variance. And I'm just curious, is there anything in state law that prohibits cities from, because in Wash-, just as an example, in Washington, we had something called administrative adjustments, where it was essentially, let's say your variance is a 30% modification to a standard, it would be like 5% to 10% modification. So, if you're taking a couple of feet off a setback, rather than, you know, 10 or 15 feet. And it was kind of a way to address those situations where you need to make a small modification or add some flexibility. That wasn't the kind of substantial undertaking that a variance was. And I don't know, I, I haven't heard of that being done in Utah, but I wasn't sure if state code, like, just made it a non-starter. But like I said, that's, could be opening a can of worms. So-
What is, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Administra-, I was just, so, variances, at least from what I've seen, tend to be substantial modifications of a standard. So, like, let's say a 30% change to a numerical standard. Administrative adjustment is like a much smaller change to that standard. So, a variance, let's say, is 20 feet modification of a standard, administrative adjustment would be like 5%. It's a, it's a, like, mini-variance, essentially. I think is the best way to describe it.
A mini-variance, where you didn't have to meet all five conditions or criterions in code to have it allowed.
Right. And it's an administrative decision, not a legislative one.
Sure. I mean, I, I think we could probably craft some code that could accommodate that. And, and the way we put it in our code is, we call it an administrative adjustment. But you would have to write that flexibility into the code. I think that's probably something that could be done. But I defer to land use attorneys on that as well. But, but that, that could provide for some additional flexibility, given certain circumstances. So-
I, I would strongly recommend, based on experience, that I think what you're talking about is a danger zone. When you talk about an administrative variance, I, I don't think there's any such thing as an administrative variance. That sounds to me like staff at the counter says, well, yeah, I can give you a few feet there. Am I misunderstanding that?
Um, at least in my experience. So, Washington had a whole set of standards that those administrative adjustments had to meet. So, there had to be, they still had to have a significant justification to meet, to be granted an administrative adjustment, and it was still subject to public comment. It just wasn't, it was a, it wasn't as high a burden that needed to be met. There was still a burden that had to be met in proving that it was necessary. It just wasn't as substantial as you would need for a variance.
Oh.
Kind of lower threshold, I guess.
Okay. That, I've never heard of anything like that. The five-part test is, if you want a one-foot variance from the code, you go to the board. And usually, it's a problem with the practical lay of the land, a rock outcropping, a historical tree, a historic building, that helps you meet the five. Really, in theory, getting a variance is, should be almost impossible to get. And that's the training that most planners have been given. Yet, that's not how most cities work. Most cities grant variances based on them complying with two or three of the five part, but not all five. And they're easily challengeable. And we got one overturned in, in Holiday. We told the board, don't grant this, you know. And it got appealed, went to court, and the court said, well, it cleared it and it made the five part. What were you thinking? Duh. So, we got our hands slapped. So, I, I've never heard of a-
I mean, conditional use, that sounds like conditional use, where the, the, the planning staff could say, hey, under the conditional use, if it's built into the code, like averaging. But if you, if you build your codes flexible, you don't need to go to the board very often. For example, flexible setbacks. So, instead of having an eight and a 10-foot side yard to allow for architectural flexibility, you can have, Center, Holiday had what was called a no point closer than. So, we had a soft setback line and a hard setback line. The hard setback was, in no case can you go beyond this line. But it was tied to an average. And the average of the, the basic standard, let's say the basic standard was 10 feet. You could go to eight and a half feet instead of 10, minimum. You could never go farther, closer than eight and a half. But the average across the whole setback had to average 10, which means that wherever you went out to eight and a half, you had to have a 11 and a half of an equivalent distance. So, it was, it was perfectly fair. And it was a way to allow for common sense flexibility. But if you wanted to go past the no point closer, you had to go to the board. So, those are, those are rules that you can adopt pretty quickly. It just takes a little bit of practice to, to apply them. But once you do, man, builders and the cities, they love them. It reduces conflict. It really does.
Well, the next topic, moving on, you know, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but fee reductions or waivers. It's interesting, but, you know, we have pretty cheap development fees. So, we did actually several months ago amend our subdivision fees to have them be more variable based on the type of terrain you're dealing with. You know, if there's slopes, certain types of things. And so, in an area like in Murray, and I think Kaysville's kind of in the same position, but most of the easy property has been developed. And so, if it's in a floodplain, that takes a lot more, you know, engineering review. Slopes takes more work and engineering review. And so, but generally speaking, I think our fees are very low. And so, at least on like zoning and application fees, I don't know if that really would be helpful to this cause. In fact, fees have been something that's been a topic of discussion in relation to affordability of housing. However, they're highly regulated, and they're meant to pay for the needs that new development causes. And so, that's something that in particular, I struggle with because if those impact fees aren't being paid, somebody else has to make up for that. And that would then be the existing residents. So, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't feel that great. Building permit fees, I mean, it's kind of the same thing. If, if somebody's, like, our, our building permit fees, our plan review fees, all of that, we're basically self-sustaining. So, our building division is funded by those permit fees and the plan review fees. And so, you know, if we're waiving those, then we're having to come up with money to augment that loss. So, you know, this is something that maybe given certain circumstances, could be some comfort with. But, but this is one just from a, I think, just a basic level that I personally struggle with. But there could be the time and a place for it as well. I was listening to book on tape and, audiobook is what we call it now. Anyway, I'm like stuck in 2019, 90, I think. Sorry. But it, it was not an E-Track. But they were talking about some of the development fees in New York and LA. And it was astounding that, you know, just to get a rezone done, you're spending, just the fee to the city is a couple hundred thousand dollars, let alone all of the studies and everything that they have to bring to even get that process started. So, you know, we don't really have that here. Again, and so, it goes back to, like, I kind of just struggle with this in general because our fees are low. So, how do we, how do we do this? I don't know what thoughts the commission has. But, you know, and there's also, so, the Modern Income Housing Plan in state code has one of the elements that you could choose to produce or eliminate impact fees. But also, there's one specifically in relation to accessory dwelling units, to not charge those. Of course, we don't have those, so we don't charge them. But I know that, and I think it was Will's advice, is like, if you're doing that out there, cities, just don't. Because that's, you know, something that the state, I think, has been scrutinizing. But, you know, that money, the impact, there is an impact to growth and development. And so, how, how does development pay for itself? Do we subsidize it? It's, I think, a philosophical discussion, but certainly one that, you know, I mean, I have feelings about. I'm sure each of you do. And at the end of the day, it's not my decision, and we'll do whatever gets implemented. But I don't know what thoughts you all would have on that.
It sounds to me like it's really, like, maybe when, have you reviewed the fees recently? Is it enough? If it's something that's low, is it, isn't enough? Is it supplementing what it needs to supplement? Is it serving the need that it needs to supplement? Sounds like maybe that's, for what you've said, it's just really nothing you can implement.
Yeah. We did increase some of our fees the first year that I was here. I think our conditional use permit fee was $50. But, no, Midday and I didn't agree. But we're writing a staff report. We're taking a sign out and putting a sign on the property. There's a cost to that. And I think it's fair to have those that who need a conditional use permit, that they pay for that. So, we raised it to $200.
What did you say?
From, was it, no, I think it was 50. Anyway, it was low. It was too low. I think we also increased our rezone fees as well. I think we also increased our rezone fees as well, but our rezone application is four hundred dollars. So it's, that's not, that's not a lot, right? I mean, we print labels, we mail out notices, we, again, we take a sign out. We have, it goes to two meetings. So, you know, we, we have really low fees here. And, and I personally don't feel badly about having high fees for people to pay that, you know, I mean, they're developing and they're doing that with intention to end up with a profit in the end. And so, you know, I, but, but what I did with that fee study anyway was I looked at like all of the fees in Davis County and kind of averaged, but then thought about our own staffing. So it wasn't, I mean, it was somewhat of a, at least on Melinda-level fee study. But it, it would be interesting to hire a consultant who could actually look at all that and see, because we probably are undercharging. But again, at the end of the day, like, I don't think ours, development application fees really would make a dent in the outcome of a pricing of a unit or the affordability of a unit. Yeah, it sounds, oh, sorry.
Go for it.
Sounds like cost-benefit analysis. It would make a big difference to the city, but probably not a big difference to the housing prices.
Yeah, it's like buying something for four ninety-five and giving a five-dollar bill and saying, "Keep the change." You know, like, it's, I, I say, you know, we just take credit, though. Like, let's just say, "Hey, we've kept them low as an incentive, so we're already doing it."
Well, you never know if that cost savings is going to be passed on. Is there a requirement, if you did a fee reduction or waiver, that they have to be affordable housing or there's a certain price point? I don't think there is.
No, and I'll tell you, that's some of the rub, that, that as this conversation has been going on, let's say, the last ten years in Utah, it was developers that was going to the state legislature that was preaching, "This is why homes are so unaffordable." And yet, and this actually happened, I was present, the Utah City Management Association meeting, and the developers presenting this, and someone in the audience said, "Okay, so are you going to reduce the cost of your home that you sell to the end user by how much we're reducing the impact fees?" They turned right around and said, "Absolutely not. We're going to make as much money as we can." So, why then we're subsidizing actually the developer? I mean, our residents are subsidizing the developer's pocket, and that's, I have an even bigger problem with. But, you know, again, when you have a bunch of growth, a bunch of impact, you have to increase your sewer capacity. You have to put, you know, more substations in, those types of things. That costs money, and the new development should pay for it. It shouldn't be the residents who have been here previously to that, so.
I assume the ADUs would also have impact fees if you're putting those in?
Well, I, I think it, I think it depends. So I think the way Farmington is doing it, that they probably should pay an impact fee. I don't know what they're going to do. I don't know if the ordinance had that level of detail. But where you're subdividing it, and it's going to be a separate ownership, and they're requiring separate meters, that's, you know, to me, that's a whole new impact. You're not... You know, if you're not using the same sewer line, you're adding more sewer line. I don't know. And, and I think that's part of the, some of the struggles that other cities have had, right? Do you charge for that? But it's been something that, at least at the state level, that the legislature has been rounding upon. There's not been any legislation about it yet. But I, I would venture to guess that if time goes on, or when they do finally bring up legislation about the detached ADUs, maybe that would be included. But, you know, I, I think it's fair, right? Like, you're going from a property that has, let's just say, twenty-four-hundred-square-foot home, and now you're adding another two-thousand-square-foot unit. There's an impact to that. And, and in some utilities, you know, may barely be felt, and in others, it might be something that just wouldn't work. And so again, that's important, too, that we, we would need to understand what that capacity is and make sure that we have adequate capacity in those utilities before we start implementing these things. You know, so there's some areas of the city that are, are low, lying, and you need to have a pump station to get sewer out. So who pays for that? Should it be the existing users or the people that are moving in, the developer? So it's, that's something that I, I feel like is, is tricky. And especially in an environment where we constantly have more needs in the city than we have funding. And so, you know, that money has to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this one makes more sense where you're, you could have a big production, a big, you know, something in a big city, you know, where you dangle that carrot.
Well, either that or it's, it's on a, if it was a homeowner who bought a lot and is, you know, like in, in an already-developed area, like a flag lot or something, and they're having to put in utilities, and they can prove that they are low income or moderate income, is there some kind of fee adjustment or waiver? That's the only time I could see something like that being effective, and then you'd have to do some kind of requirement that they'd have to live in the property for at least two years, owner occupied. And if they sold before then, then they'd have to pay the difference or something like that, but...
You know, state law prohibits the city from waiving impact fees to ourself, so.
Yeah.
We, so, we would have to, I mean, the city, let's say we build a new fire station. We have to pay our own impact fees to ourselves. So, again, that's kind of something that I think... Yeah, so, I mean, we also have to pay ourselves our own utility fees. Those are enterprise funds, and that's been something that the, you know, so this is kind of a weird thing. But, but one thought that I did have, at least with the impact fees, if there was a development that provided some type of a, you know, pocket park that the city didn't own to maintain, maybe there is a reduction of the park impact fees, not a waiver. But then I think, well, now the developer's going to have to pay to put that in. They're going to have to create an HOA to maintain it. That's going to cost, it's going to increase the cost in the end. Does that really even work? You know, and, and it, and it may pencil out short-term, but then longer term, is it, is it really a benefit? My husband and I were down in the Daybreak area over the weekend, and just out of curiosity, I started looking, you know, the listings, and some of the HOA fees down there are three hundred and fifty dollars a month. So let's say you're able to afford that home, but then you add in the HOA fee, and it's no longer affordable. And so that's, you know, something that, how do you, how do you do that? So at least with, if there's an initial reduction in that impact fee, that benefits the first user, but it doesn't benefit subsequent users, right? Because now they're paying the HOA fee, they're not really gaining any discount. Because when the house is sold, it's not going to be reduced by, you know, twelve hundred dollars, because the, the fee was waived. So, yeah, there's a lot of practicalities with this.
Not much benefit on this one for us, probably.
I do have a question about the impact fee. Is it considered a one-time fee or is it just a transfer, a transfer fee?
It's, it's a one-time fee when the impact is made, yeah, so.
Because like HOA has a one-time fee, anytime it changes ownership as well, like the Daybreak area.
Oh, really? Okay.
And the St. George area, I've seen that as well. They'll have an impact fee that, when the ownership is transferred. So if this is a one-time fee?
Yeah, in fact, we just had some questions and, and received some answers about impact fees on a certain development were waived thirty years ago. And now that site's going to redevelop. The impact fees were never charged. Do we make them pay impact fees now? And there's advisory opinions from the Property Rights and Budsmen that's like, "No, you can't, because the impact has already happened." So you can't go back and retroactively say, "They weren't paid thirty years ago. You have to pay them now." But I guess HOAs can.
On impact fees, on impact fees, basically, impact fees are to offset the cost to provide service. That's just the basic way of looking at it. When the city charges you a building permit, the state doesn't allow you to use your building permits as a revenue generator. In other words, you can't charge a whole bunch of money for a building permit for a house to come in so that you can transfer that money over to another fund. And so, like Melinda was saying earlier, it can be a problem when you waive fees, impact, or waive permit fees, which cities should, really shouldn't be in the habit of doing, because those fees can only be used to run your department. That is very specific. You cannot just generate a bunch of revenue from permits and use it elsewhere. And cities have been sued over that. So, for example, in Holliday, we hired Zion's Bank to come in and do a business license study, because we have to base our business license fees on the actual cost for the city to provide that service. And the same thing for your, your building permit fees are based on labor costs for plan review. And your impact fees are based on a study as well. You can't just charge whatever you want, because you need to build a new water tank up the hill. You have to do it based on the number of units, how much it's going to cost, and what that one-time fee will be. So just thinking in terms of impact fees, if you don't have a good knowledge of it, your basic way of looking at it is, cities charge the fees they need to to cover their costs, not to generate profit. Now, in terms of waiving fees, all of you are, should be or are aware of the Cottonwood Mall project. The Cottonwood Mall sat vacant for many years, and the city waited during the two thousand eight through two thousand twelve downturn, the Great Recession, to try to get somebody interested in developing that property. And the city developed a, a huge master plan called the Development Master Plan. And it was a million-dollar effort by the developer and the city to partner on coming up with this plan for this fifty-six-acre project. Well, what's weird is, is the market, the, the market changed in a very short period of time to where the Cottonwood Mall had once been a beloved place for people to go. People loved going to the mall, especially at Christmas time. But in a short period of time after it went dark, people stopped going to the Cottonwood Mall. And so it became a different kind of place. You couldn't build it as a mall. You couldn't rebuild it the way it was. So the purpose for my history here is to just kind of set the table for what the city eventually did. They tried so hard, I must have been asked fifteen hundred times in fifteen years, a hundred times a year easily, "When are you guys going to develop the Cottonwood Mall?" Everybody would ask that. Well, what was happening in the meantime was West Jordan, South Jordan, Sandy, Bluffdale, Draper, they're building all these shopping centers and these malls. Everything's going crazy. Cottonwood Mall is now not the place to be. So they had to totally revision what they were going to do. So instead of it being a retail, so it was purely retail before, you know, a million square feet of retail. Well, that generates a lot of income. Well, you're now not going to be able to get people to drive into Holliday to go to the mall, because it's been eclipsed by all these other developments. So the city came up with a mixed-use master plan. And in the end, that is what the city is building there. But to get this project over the hump, to get the developer to finally get everything together, and we went through multiple developers who were interested in developing the mall site. But there, the, the cost of the land was so expensive at over a million dollars an acre, which happens to be the residential rate for land in Holliday. Quarter-acre lot can be a half million dollars for the dirt. So interestingly enough, that fifty-six-acre project, as much as it had once been a fun place, now it wasn't. And so the city tried to sweeten the pot. They came up with a development agreement through the RDA, a development agreement process, and Melinda, you're familiar with RDA. But in the end, what the city did was, one of the incentives that they did to get the project built was, they waived all of the impact fees for parks. So in Holliday, that fee for any dwelling, whether it's apartment, you know, well, not for apartment. You have to do it fractionally. We had to study fractionally. But for a single-family home or for a condo or townhome, that fee was twenty-two hundred dollars in Holliday. So based on the number of units that the Cottonwood Mall developer was going to build, those impact fees were going to be over a million dollars. So the one time that I saw impact fee waiver very useful was, that was one that the city committed to early on, and they said, "When you build this project, we're going to waive all, all of the park impact fees." There will never be a park impact fee on any residential dwelling. And some people got their nose bent out of shape on that. They were kind of upset about it. But that was a bone, that was something to drive an incentive for the developer. "Well, okay, that's a million dollars we saved there." Well, on a project that's going to be over a billion dollars in value, that's actually a fairly small amount. But it still helped. So impact fees can be used on occasion to, you know, get somebody to build something that you want and need. And believe me when I tell you, people were so anxious to see that dust bowl. It used to be a mall. It just turned into a dust bowl. And so now that it's being built, it's great. Now, is the city going to miss that million dollars? Yeah. That means we just are never going to be able to have money in that area. But because of the RDA and the way the money comes in later with the greater value, the city is, is betting on that they will have more money later because of the value that that development adds to the community and the greater property tax that comes out of it. So it's kind of complicated, but waiver of fees can sometimes make the difference between a project being built or not. It, sometimes it depends, and I'll put it in a nutshell. On a really small project, it can be the difference between being built or not. And on a really big project, it's the difference. But, but on the middle stuff, like a single-family home, no. Waiving that fee, it doesn't matter. But again, for a really small thing where somebody's really, you know, a, a small addition or something, yeah, you waive that. It can make a difference. But cities shouldn't waive development fees very often. And in terms of modern income housing, I would say that this is an area that it should strongly be considered. If there's a difference between somebody building a moderately-priced unit versus a regularly-priced, and you can waive fees under a development agreement, I think it's wise. So I'm glad you brought it up, Melinda, because based on, you know, what I've seen, it can be helpful. But generally, not that useful. And it's a slippery slope. Once you start waiving fees here and there, man, you better decide how you're going to support doing it over here, but not doing it over there. So it's a tool to be used sparingly, I would say.
I had a duplicate side slide. So any other ideas or topics? Or does anybody maybe want to summarize some of the things that you feel like might work well in Kaysville? Our next steps really would be to start drafting an ordinance and, and bring that back at a future meeting, hopefully in November. That would kind of, well, that would create opportunities based on our discussion. And then hopefully, right in the end, we get a good ordinance in place, it gets adopted, and people start using it. But any other thoughts or what have you learned from your planning sessions and all of your reading? And anything we're missing?
Is this, excuse me, is this like an opportunity kind of curate of the kind of, I don't know if curate is the right word, for the city to continue with like their, their master plan, their city plan? Just to kind of like work that into that seamlessly as possible?
Yeah, so the whole reason why we're even doing this is because our Modern Income Housing Plan that's been adopted says that, well, that in twenty twenty-three, we'd do research, in twenty twenty-four, we'd bring an ordinance forward for consideration. Obviously, I can't predict whether or not something would be adopted. But all of this is in efforts to meet those criteria that we, we have to with the modern income housing. So, yeah, I mean, that's a great point, Commissioner Seade, is that we would want whatever we craft. The general plan would need to support that. I mean, I think you'd be, you can, right? But I, I would want to draft an ordinance that is in harmony with what the general plan says, which I think is doable, right? And we want to maintain our existing neighborhoods. But also, we want diverse housing, and we want to provide some affordability and life cycle housing. So I, I think what we would bring forward would match... So, I, I think what we would bring forward would match what our general plan would want us to do. So, yeah, that's a great point.
I'm excited to see it. I think it's been a great discussion. You presented some great ideas. The first thing I'll look for is if it has detached ADU's in it.
That's great. Well, I, I, I mean, I've, over the last few weeks, I've really thought about this. I mean, I've, and I kind of sketched something out today. How practical it would be, I don't know, but, but one of those that I had listed in here is that we allow, in a development, that we allow, along with construction of the home, for a detached ADU to be constructed. And, and perhaps that can soften some of the concerns that our elected officials have because now we're doing it with new construction, and it's not necessarily impact going back in time. Um, I mean, I, I don't know, but, but I think that really is an element that could make a big difference and would be fairly easy. Um, it, you know, and, and some of the things that I've said with that is, not everybody has the lot space to do that, not everybody has the desire to do that, but most, like, I don't think we're going to be flooded with permits and applications because not everybody has the money to do it either. So, you kind of have to have the combination of all that financial means, the space on the lot, the need or the desire to do it. And so, um, the communities that I know have had detached ADU ordinances in place, they're processing maybe 10 a year. Um, you know, Murray, um, I think they've allowed these for about 10 years. I think they have 70 permitted altogether. Bountiful has an allowance for them. They get about 10 a year, maybe, eight to 10 a year. So, um, now, some of that depends too, right? Like, we do have a lot of larger lots in Kaysville, which I think provides more opportunity than you would have in places where the lots aren't quite as big. But that said, you know, I, I don't think we'll be flooded with them. And so, that, that was a thought that I had, that, that right off the bat with this modern income housing or zoning incentives, like, maybe we do incentivize that you can have on the same lot, two dwellings. One's the primary residence, and the other one is the detached ADU that's smaller, so. And I think that's also direction, right? I mean, this discussion really was for staff to get direction, but I think that's been a common thread with the comments that I've heard tonight. So, that's something we'll look to try and include as we draft that.
There is a, a document, and I think it's a Centerville City document that I had found that was really simple and laid out, who benefits from, you know, the ADU? And I'll try and find it and share it. I thought it was really useful to see, you know, all of the benefits that are there. And one of, you know, my thoughts outside of, you know, obviously, the, you know, the, you know, the support of the, you know, modern income housing is just four-generation communities, and that we need more four-generation communities. And this would just be, like you say, not be a, a big influx. It would be pockets, but I feel like that really benefits a community where you bring in grandma, like, or great-grandma. Really, we're talking great-grandma, right? That's needing care. Um, the older I get, the closer grandma seems like, that seems younger than I. When you say grandma, we're talking about up, you know, like the grandparents. Anyways, um, and bringing in youth to more mature, you know, established neighborhoods, young married, you know, young parents. And, and I think there's a lot of benefit in that age, you know, diversity, as well as income diversity, so.
Commissioner Shepherd attended the, was it this past Monday or was it last week? Anyway.
It was last, last week.
She shared some thoughts with me about considering all generations. Um, you know, and, and there's, I don't know where I've heard this in the last week or so, but schools are closing because there's not enough kids. So, that's sad, right? Because you're not, your community isn't keeping that full, um, spectrum of all ages, but that can also lead to an opportunity, and perhaps those sites, if they are closed down, could be repurposed to provide some more additional housing. But then again, you bring in more housing, more families.
You need a school.
You need more schools. Yeah, so, it's tricky. Well, thank you for the discussion. We'll work on bringing something back and, uh, hopefully, hopefully in November.
Well, I, I do, I think that the ADUs definitely have a place, um, in our community just because we are that kind of community where there's multiple generations. I mean, my parents live next door. My father-in-law lives a block away. My brother-in-law lives a block away this way. My sister-in-law lives two doors down. And, and it's the same with, I mean, the, the lady. Yeah, my husband, after all that happened, my husband's like, "It's time to move." But, um, but the gal across the street, she's in her mid-90s, she was born in that house. She's lived in that house her entire life. And her son lives next door, which is why she can continue to live in that house. And her other son lives a couple blocks away. The other people on the other corner, their daughter lives a block this way, and their son lives a couple blocks this way. It's, that's just how it is. But we can't have that anymore with our kids because they can't afford to live here if we don't make these allowances. So, um, allowing these ADUs and maybe adjusting some setbacks and allowing a little bit more density in our existing areas and on these lots. And I don't really have a problem with two-story, it's just if it goes way too high, as far as the heights restriction. So, um, yeah, I think there's a lot of things that can be done and adjusted to, to bring that in. And I think there's going to have to be a lot of creative solutions as we move forward with different lots and different, um, areas where we might have to, we don't have, we also don't have a lot of commercial that brings in money with sales tax. So, like, your impact fees and stuff, they have to pay for what we do for the city offices there. And so, it's not like we have that as a backup. We don't have a lot of sales tax revenue. We don't have the big Targets or the Walmarts or the car dealerships or whatever, yeah. So, we have, we have to keep, keep an eye on, on the, you know, what we do with those fees, so.
When this comes back, are we going to have more discussion? I mean, we're gonna?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I may be so bold as to schedule a public hearing in, in case it's well enough along, but only because our plan says we'll bring this to the council by the end of the year.
Okay.
And it, I'm behind, that's all I can say.
Okay.
Um, but that doesn't mean that we would have to adopt something that evening, right? So, so the opportunity for additional discussion will always be there. Um, we're just kind of under the gun with trying to get this in by the end of the year, so I am not the reason why we might be found non-compliant on our modern income housing.
I just, I just want to be able to, you know, when we have it as a group, to be able to look at it, to see if there's some technical suggestions.
Oh, sure, yeah. Oh, absolutely, always, yeah, always open to that, so.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and, and if it's, if we're not far enough along for a public hearing, then we can just bring a, you know, real rough draft back for more discussion. So.
Good, love it. Uh, let's move on then to agenda item number four, approval of minutes from September 26th. Any concerns with the minutes?
It was, it was a long read.
So, we did have an issue, the audio did not record, so thankfully, it was on this meeting, um, easier to recreate since it was such a short one. But if there is anything the commission sees that was missing, that's probably the reason why. Hmm. I didn't see anything that was missing, but.
Yeah.
I was in town meeting, so. Sure, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of September 26th, 2024. A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, any other matters for the planning commission?
Yeah, a few things. So, we will have a meeting on the 24th. We have two rezones that will be on. Um, we've already sent the public hearing notice for one. The other rezone came in on Tuesday. It will be for, if you recall, the property we rezoned over on Angel Street, um, that was the old Webster Farm. And we rezoned that to R114 last year, then Symphony bought the property. We came in with that little triangle. Um, Symphony developed the subdivision just east of that as well, Majestic, sorry, Mountain Vista's. I'm confusing my subdivisions from two cities ago. Uh, but they, they are looking for a rezone to reduce the size of the lot left over that they've owned since that subdivision was done. Um, there are utilities that go through the area, and so they're trying to reduce that lot size so that they could put the stub road in where those utilities currently are. So, um, we will be mailing out that public notice tomorrow, and we'll email you the public notice as well, but it's already on Facebook. Um, so, both of those rezones, I think, should be fairly quick items. I, you know, they're not, um, they're both just kind of fixing a problem that exists.
As far as rezones go.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry to say that.
Well, uh, I cursed us. Let's see, we did receive a letter from Commissioner Keach earlier this week saying that she is, is very regrettably choosing to resign her position as the alternate commissioner. So, we'll miss her, um, and I think, you know, like, her heart's here, but she just doesn't have the availability. So, we'll definitely miss her. Couple other updates. We had the RDA, the Communitative Reinvestment Area on the agenda on Tuesday morning with the county commission, but they pushed that. I don't know when it will get back on, but we're still hopeful that that'll go forward. And then I was able to, Ann and I had a scoping meeting earlier this week with Wasatch Front based on the scope for the small area plan that I sent to them a few weeks ago. And I think their goal is to try and get that RFP posted in November, and then we'll look to probably awarding in December, and then hopefully, project kick-off in like February, March of next year. So, we're on track with that. Not quite on track with the zoning incentives ordinance, but I'm on track with at least one thing. So, that is all I had. I would love to hear reports, um, maybe from anybody who attended the APA meetings today and/or recently, and some of the things you may have learned or might know what's coming next at us from the state.
I'm presenting. I am.
I will be presenting tomorrow. Sorry, couldn't get that, there needs to be a little light there that tells you that the speaker's.
There is.
Anyway, for anybody who's going to the conference tomorrow, um, I'll be in a panel discussion at 11:20 on NIMBYism. So, um, we presented at the Utah Land Use Institute, oh, last month. We had about 350, 400 people, and we had a really cool discussion. And then, uh, we're going to just repeat that tomorrow. So, if anybody's going, love to see you. If not, you can always buttonhole me and...
Does Nick Dirksen still a panelist?
What?
Will Nick be a panelist again? Nick Dirksen?
I'm sorry, I cannot, I can't understand you.
Will our friend Nick Dirksen be on the panel?
Oh, yes, Nick. Nick and I are presenting along with Chris Hupp, who's with SOMAS, and with Augie Wasman, who's with ULI. So, the four of us have developed a really pretty full-bodied discussion about NIMBYism. And so, there's some, there's some good stuff there, if I do say so. And, um, anyway, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, again, anytime if you kind of want to understand NIMBYism from a viewpoint of people dealing with it a long time.
Yeah, it looked, that's the one I was going to go to that hour. I went today and had a good time and, you know, passed myself as knowing what I was doing there, you know, but, uh, learned a lot of stuff, so.
No, stop, Jeff, we're going.
You're not a planner. I was like, I have a need to.
Katie's not saying anything. Um, so I did do that Let's Talk City and Town Centers webinar, it was like over a week ago, I think. And, uh, I emailed the link for the recorded, it's about an hour-long, um, webinar to Melinda. She's going to send that out. It had some good information in there. It was all about, you know, like metropolitan, urban, city, or neighborhood centers, which several of those, the metropolitan and urban particularly, don't really apply to us. But there was an interesting, so they had the mayor of Provo talk on that as well, and they did this video that they put online to, uh, about their city to introduce people to Provo. I thought that was sort of interesting. I liked how they went about that. Um, I don't know, there was some other things that I thought, um, that everybody's always talking about the walkability and biking and, and all that, and the, um, graphics that they showed had parking away from where the, um, retail centers were. And all I could think of was my 83-year-old mother who can't walk very far. And so, those opportunities would not be available to her to shop because she wouldn't be able to utilize, um, those shopping experiences if she has to walk very far. And, you know, we can't allow for everybody, but at the same time, we can't discriminate either. And so, there's even just ADA and stuff like that, you have to have a certain closeness and proximity. So, there's some things that I think they, um, maybe need to, needed to take more into account, especially in an area like Kaysville where we have a larger aging population. So, um, and there was just some, uh, they talked about mixed use and stuff. Let's see, we, I took a bunch of notes, but, um, they, I did do the Water Smart Growth in Utah, and they have a guidebook, but they also do a, um, workshop that they do, um, every year. And you can bring six to 10 people, you have to apply to go, but it's paid for by them. You bring six to 10 people, and they recommend that you bring not only people from your, um, planning department, but also people from like your irrigation, like Hates Creek, or if you have agriculture in your area, maybe somebody who represents some of the agriculture, or different, um, different people that you would be partnering with or working with on these, um, water use requirements for your area. So, I, and the people that had, that spoke, that had gone to their workshop really, um, had a lot of good things to say about that, that you, uh, build a 12-month action plan while you're there, you do all this stuff to, um, make sure you're, you're incorporating water use and, um, that Water Smart Growth, as they call it, into your planning, so.
Is that information available that we can like add to our website?
Um, so the... The guidebook can be downloaded from their website, and, um, they had, you know, I don't know if most people would want to read it, but, you know, like planning and goal setting and land use and development policies and stuff like that, but it's, it's available. Uh, and they have one, so they produce a guidebook each year for that specific workshop that they're doing. So, like, the guidebook for May 2024 was for northern Utah, but if you go to their guidebook from 2023, it was for Washington County. So, you have to make... So you have to make sure you get the one that more applies to, um, your area. Um, yeah, so.
They were all online, I think, and.
Yeah.
Just tons of links and resources and.
They had.
Mountains and stuff.
A bunch of different people from different, different departments that were up and speaking and talking about the resources available, the tools available and stuff, so.
I'd be interested in a workshop to try and put together something. That's going to be fun.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, I think Kaysville had, wasn't on the list that they had attended.
Yeah, we have had, we had a conversation earlier this year about trying to go, but I was down as staff. So I was like, let's try next year.
With a bad back.
Um, yeah, so now that we're fully staffed, um, and also when the applications were due, I think we're also missing an engineer. So we were.
Yeah.
It would have been hard this year to do it, but.
Well, and this next year, they may do back in southern Utah, so it may not be an option.
Not up at Utah State.
Yeah. So it just sort of depends on where they're planning on doing it at. Yeah, they did the, from guide, guidebook to ground, uh, modernization approaches to parking, and that was interesting. Um, a lot of things are overparked, as Paul was talking about, and there was, uh, some, definitely some tools and stuff. They now have on their WFRC website that you can, um, filter the information so that you can filter it to the area, you could filter it to date, because he says some of that stuff goes back to the 1970s that doesn't really apply or it's based in Florida or somewhere. And so, um, he says that now you can filter it, so. Um, and then we, I went to the one on the Utah City for Vineyard, and that looks like an amazing project, but it is going to be so expensive to live there.
Oh.
No affordable housing there.
Oh, really?
That was, I mean, they're.
The plan seems that there'll be variety, but.
Oh, it's beautiful.
It might just be a hotspot, you know, that really.
Yeah, it's, I mean, they're saying they're going to have studio apartments for the UVU students and stuff, but I'm like, what, UVU students could be able to afford an apartment there? Even a studio.
Well, and someone asked a question during that session about affordability and they kind of dodged it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was me.
First rounds are going to be market.
Yeah, I was just like.
Katie, I did question here, where is this thing you're talking about?
Utah City.
It's in Vineyard.
In Vineyard.
Yeah. It's, it's going to be beautiful. I mean, the boardwalks and the walkway, the, the passeos, like, do we get siestas with those passeos? But the, just, I mean, the green spaces, the resort-style pools and the, I mean, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
But the same time, they like, oh, it will be markedly priced. And I'm just like, with all of that fees for that maintenance, because I did also ask them if they were, uh, or someone else asked about maintenance, and they said that they are, like the pool, they're, um, deeding it back to the city, but the developer is going to lease it and maintain it. So that's all going to be part of the HOA fees for everybody. So you're just like, that's, price is passed on to the people buying the property.
Yeah, for, for me, um, just one last thing, I, my biggest concern about modern income housing is that we're all talking about it, but I don't see anybody doing it based on what cities are trying to do to incentivize it. I mean, like here, people come in for rezones and there's discussion about it, getting more units, but there's got to be some tie to say, no, you got to have X percentage of those units are affordable under the law, the moderate, the, you know, the AMI. I mean, I just don't think there should be any density bonus granted just for the sake of it, just to get more housing. We need more housing, but I actually would like to see somebody build something that is priced at 80% AMI. I don't think I've seen anybody, has anybody seen any units built except downtown Salt Lake that are actually required at the AMI level? I don't know.
Well, in those surveys that you sent us, we're asking for smaller.
Yeah.
Single-family homes, 1,200, 1,500 square foot homes, three-bedroom, two-bath. Developers don't build that. They say that the market, there's nobody, the buyers out there don't want it. That's their excuse, but they don't build that.
And I think it's a chicken and the egg, like Melinda said earlier. Is it, if we can get the ball rolling by building, for example, slab-on-grade units, you know, where there's no basement, it's just slab-on-grade, so it's a little cheaper, and it's like a casita in Vegas because of the soil, and it's just 800 square feet, you know, one, two bedrooms, a little kitchen, and, you know, there's, I think there's a market for those rentals, but if you can formalize it a little more, I think there's a market for people to buy those because people want to build equity. They got to start, I, if you don't build it, you'll never know.
Well, and especially in an area where we have an aging population.
Yes.
That wants to get out of their home that has stairs.
Yep.
But there's nothing affordable here for them to stay in their same community.
That's right. Oh, tell me about it in Holliday? Wow. We had a council member that begged for eight years, our city council, to allow for small shotgun-type building lots. You know, a shotgun building lot is like 35 feet wide and 100 feet deep, and it's tandem parked, and it has one step or just a few inches up to get up into the house, so it's really flat. And she said, for me and my husband, we would move out of our, out of our, um, you know, split-level home in a minute, but she was in her 80s and she's saying, I need a place where I can just walk in, go right into the house with no steps really, and then right back out. Use one car and park one as an emergency or as a second car. And she said, why can't we allow that? She says, they're building in Vegas, they sell them like crazy in Vegas, whole subdivisions of these small lot, you know, shotgun-type homes. I just don't see anybody in Utah building that because I don't think that's being allowed. Nobody's proposing because they think they're going to get shot down if they propose it.
I just assume there's no money in it for the builder because it's oftentimes has, you know, much work, but there's just not the payoff. That would be my assumption, is how do we, how do you get to where it's, you know, commercially viable for builders, developers to build small?
You know, you know what? You've brought an interesting point. I wonder if the planning commission could have a evening where we just have a work session and we ask builders to come in and we just have a discussion with them. What kind of building types would you build if you could? What are the hurdles? Maybe we need to just talk directly to them and start basing our ordinances on, well, what, what, what isn't working and why isn't it working? What, what would help? Because maybe they'll give us feedback that would be super useful instead of us assuming, you know? I don't know.
We could, but again, our regulations are so bare bones. We don't have, we don't have any restrictions at all.
Yeah. On, on minimum size and stuff like that?
None.
I think just for understanding viewpoint, like, what?
I'd like to talk to them.
Why not? Why don't they build that?
Yeah.
I just am curious and my assumption, and again, it's an assumption, is they will build what they'll make money at, and if they can build a, you know, $2 million home and make a lot, or a little teeny home and make a little.
Maybe that's something that we could do with a few other cities too, so.
You know what?
Centerville, Farmington.
Yes.
Kaysville.
We could have a roundtable, uh, discussion that's open to the public, but I, you guys might know, I volunteer with the Home Builders Association up in South Ogden, and we are, I sit down and we have a roundtable luncheon where we have like 30 different people in there, and there are inspectors, planners and contractors, and we talk about this kind of stuff. So I'm hearing different stuff, but I'd love for you guys to hear what I hear and talk about removing hurdles. Maybe we're going to hear stuff we haven't thought about.
Okay, it's been a long day. We'll consider this meeting adjourned.
Fantastic.
Motion to adjourn.
Salute.